Well, thank you. I want to call this special meeting of the city council order. And obviously, this is going to be a fun meeting tonight. Meaning like four years ago, it was maybe not as fun for me. But we'll leave that alone. But nevertheless, we will begin this meeting with the invocation, the Pledge Allegiance, the National Anthem. And so, the invocation will be given by Pastor Vicky Braback, who's also our lead chaplain in the Police Department. The Pledge Allegiance will be done by retired Master Sergeant of the United States Army, Arturo Padilla, also a member of the Community Activities Commission. And the singing of the National Anthem. Is Alicia here, honey? I don't know. Okay. I'm going to wait a couple of minutes because we have a special person that's going to be singing the National Anthem. So let's give us two minutes. I apologize. And then, I'd also like to introduce the Montclair High School Junior R.O. 2C. And they will present the colors of our great flag. And as soon as Alicia walks in, we will begin. So we'll wait for Alicia. Sorry. And the person will be singing the National Anthem. Her name's Alicia Valinsky. She's a friend of my daughter, and she's also has sung on The Voice or performed in The Voice. And she's also done some other theatric musical performances. Yeah. I also want to acknowledge our Assemblymember Freddie Rodriguez, who just got himself elected for the last two years. I think the last two years of his term. So. Our former councilmember, Mayor Protem Carroll-Ruff, in the audience. Also recognize our former city manager, a member of the Montavista Water Board, Michael G. Milheiser. And I know that we have also Montavista Water Boardmember Tony Lopez in the audience. And also, Montavista Water Boardmember Manny Martinez in the audience. So I think I got all the politicians out of the way. And with that, I'd also like to introduce Alicia, who's also in the audience with us. So, I'm going to ask that, again, we will, just for everybody's knowledge, we'll begin with the invocation, the Pledge Allegiance. And then after that, it will be the singing of the National Anthem. We'll do everything at the podium. And again, I'd like to introduce the Montclair High School Junior R.O. 2C Plague. They'll present the colors. Please stand, everybody.
Color. Ready, color. Four, four. March. Left. Left. Left, right. Right. Left, up, two. Aho. Carefully. Colors.
Vicky? Vicky Braback will serve the invocation. Is Vicky here?
Shall we pray? Father God, Creator of all that is, we humble our hearts before you. Thank you for coming to this earth as our Savior and resurrected Lord. May the sweetness of your presence be upon the people gathered here this evening. Father, I speak the name of Jesus over every city councilmember. Grant them wisdom, strength, and health as they fulfill the duties of their office with grace, mercy, and justice. Help them perceive the needs of the community as they make future decisions and move their hearts by your Spirit. In the name of Jesus, I pronounce this blessing over you, that your hearts will be stirred by the living God. Now may the God of all hope fill you with all joy and peace in believing that you may abound in hope by the power of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Four, four. March. Left. Left. Left, right. Right. Left, group. Ho. Left, face. Present. Arms.
If you're in a uniform, salute by the numbers. If not, please place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Alicia.
Testing one, two, three.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
And please stand as the entire color guard.
Order. Arms. Order. Colors. Right, face. Four, four. March. Left. Left. Left, right. Right. Right, left.
Thank you. And again, on the behalf of the City Council, myself, I'll be... Vicky Braback, chaplain with the Montclair Police Department; our Sergeant, Master Sergeant, Arturo Padilla, with the Montclair Community Activities Commission; of course, Alicia Valinsky, with her beautiful voice. Thank you. Clap your hands. So now, I'm going to ask the roll call from the city clerk.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Rue.
Present.
Mayor Dutray.
Here. Okay. Next item is the business item to consider adoption, Resolution Number 22-3383. This is to recite the general municipal election held on November 2022 and declare its results. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion for that as presented this evening.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Mayor Protem Rue, seconded by Councilmember Johnson, and we'll do a tronic vote. Is it working? Like I said, it won't be me as mayor.
Voice vote.
Let's do a voice vote. Let's call for a voice vote. Just go ahead.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Rue.
Aye.
Aye. So that's adopted 5-0. Thank you very much. And now, we will begin the swearing-in of the three elected members of the City Council. For City Council, it will be Councilmember Protem Rue, Bill Rue, and Councilmember Carissa Martinez. And for mayor, it's going to be me. However you want to call me. Thank you. So I'm going to begin with the mayor, the swearing-in of the mayor of the City of Montclair for a four-year term. And I'm going to ask that my wife, Anne Dutray, who is also a retired member of the United States Army, Lieutenant Colonel, and also known as the First Lady of Montclair.
Stand here. I'll stand here. Going to raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Yes, ma'am.
I state your name.
I, Javier John Dutray.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
True faith, allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties about to enter.
And in the Army, we say, "So help me, God."
So help me, God. Thank you, ma'am. How did you get you in there? Okay. And her oath will be done by our former Mayor Protem and Councilmember Carroll-Ruff.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the United States.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And I will take this obligation freely.
And I will take this obligation.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will and faithfully discharge.
And that I will and faithfully.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay. Finally, it will be Mayor Protem, Bill Rue, will be conducting his oath. And his oath will be conducted by our Assemblymember Freddie Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Bill Rue.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. So at this time, I'm going to allow those who just got sworn in for four years to make any comments to wish to do so. And I'll start with Councilmember Carissa Martinez.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor Dutray. Thank you, everybody, for being here today. This is such a treat to have a crowded room, and this is all for us. It's so amazing. Thank you. I am really looking forward to another four years. I've been on the council now for three years, and our city has come a long way, went from an amazing city to an even more amazing city, and I can't wait to see the next four years. We have so much exciting news on the horizon in the next 20 or 30 years, and it seems like that is forever away, but it's going to be here before we know it. We are an innovative city. We have wonderful residents, and we care about our residents. So I'm very, very excited to have another four years with you. Thank you all.
Great. Thank you. Now, I'm going to start with, next, with Mayor Protem, Bill Rue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank everybody for being here, taking time out of your evening. And this is part of what we do in America. It's democracy at the local level. I want to thank my friend, the Honorable Assemblymember Freddie Rodriguez, for the great job he does. His work with veterans, small business, public safety, but of course, the gold line. Thank you. And thank you for taking time from Sacramento to be here. There is somebody in the audience who, without him, I probably wouldn't be sitting here today. He started me on this journey of public service and politics decades ago, and that is the Honorable Mr. Michael Milheiser. Thank you, sir. Because he's served as a political mentor for me, and our families, our friends, and his family has a tremendous leadership role in this whole region for many years. Thank you. I have, of course, our city family here today. Our commissioners, our staff, thank you for the work you do. Many of our commissioners, thank you for the efforts you've put out for many of the candidates up here today. We appreciate it. I have some of my Realtor family here from the Citrus Valley Association of Realtors, Mr. Lucano, and Mr. Sal Armijo, and his first lady, Ms. Helen Armijo. Thank you for taking time out of your busy professional lives. You help me every day in my public policy role, and you help me make it look easy. Thank you. My real family, my brothers and sisters, are not able to be here this evening. They are all in the education field, and due to some of the remaining COVID pandemic restrictions, they really aren't comfortable gathering in closed spaces. So I think they're watching on TV tonight, or however we do this anymore, TV the old way, but virtually, and I appreciate their effort and support. The line of people I'd have to list tonight would be too long, but there's one person who... She can't be with me physically, but she walks with me in spirit every day. That's my mother. She taught me how to lead with love, compassion, dignity, and respect, and she led by example. I'm the eldest of five. My mother had five children alone, all year apart, and she worked two jobs. It wasn't easy, but she taught me what sacrifice is about, what staying focused on bigger goals are about, that it doesn't matter how much money is in your bank, doesn't matter what type of a car you drive, how beautiful your house is. In fact, I remember, we had to make decisions, a gallon of paint for the house or a gallon of milk on the table. Thank you, Mom, for the gallon of milk on the table. It wasn't always easy, but she gave us... She gave me an example to follow. She reminded all of us that when we get involved in our community, we need to do so because it's an obligation for the rent we pay, the rent, the space, the rent we pay for the space we take up on Earth. And mostly, she taught me that in life, we're supposed to do things for the last, the least, the lost, and the lonely, that they're the ones we're called to help. And she also taught me that, and probably the most important lesson I've ever learned, that we are all God's children, deserving of respect, dignity, and equality. I look forward to the four years, what we will be doing in this city, the good things that are ahead, to continue to work with all of our families in this city for this, not just the events we put on, but for the day-to-day things they need, all these hard-working families paying their taxes, sending their children to school, and really never complaining. I appreciate them, and I appreciate everybody here. I will be available to you. When I'm right, let me know. When I've done something wrong, also let me know. Thank you, and God bless.
Well, thank you. Now it's my turn. Obviously, I want to say thank yous to some people. First of all, I want to say thank you to my family, my wife, my beautiful wife, for all the work that you do for me, and of course, allowing me to serve another four years as the mayor of this great city. I want to say thank you to my daughter, who's also in the audience, Janine. She's just came home from the University of San Francisco for a little winter break vacation. I want to say thank you to my mom, who's in the audience, like Bill just talked about moms and sacrifices they do, and obviously, my mom and my dad did the much sacrifice of my life. And I also want to recognize my heritage, being Basque from France in the Spanish region in Europe. And of course, I want to say, "Go France on Sunday in the World Cup." And of course, I want to say thank you to everyone who have supported me in both my political life and being the Councilmember Mayor in, of course, this past election cycle. Thank you for all your support, those who voted for me, and obviously, those who also did not vote for me. Thank you for your support as well in terms of allowing me and trusting me in doing this job. And I just wanted to say that earlier today, I did stop at Bellevue Cemetery. I made two stops there. The first stop I did is I visited my dad's crypt to say thank you to him. And then I also stopped at the crypt for our former Councilmember Leonard Politz. And I think that those two individuals have played a great deal of me enjoying politics and, of course, me being involved in this city. There is another councilmember who's not here this evening, but she is also up in the Big Sky. Her name is Tricia Martinez. And she always says something, there's a motto on the flag, on the Montclair flag, and we keep forgetting, talk about it, but she always brings it up. It's called, "The people are the city." That's our motto for the City of Montclair. And so, obviously, what does that mean? Basically, that means that we're here to do the people's work. We're not here for our egos. We're not here about our special projects or running for higher off, for State Assembly. No, just... I'm not running for State Assembly, by the way. But we're here to do the people's work. And why is that important? Because when someone calls 911, they expect police or fire to show up. When someone wants their trash picked up, well, they want their trash picked up. When someone flushes their toilet, they want to make sure it flushes correctly. When someone wants a pothole field, you have to take care of that. When someone wants supermarkets or restaurants, clean parts, streets fixed up, those are some of the roles that we have, as members of the City Council, obviously, the City of Montclair. Challenges, I think, coming up next four years are challenges, or I think, things we need to accomplish. One, homelessness, it's a growing problem, not just in Montclair and the region, but it's an issue that we have to tackle and focus more on. Number two is, I think, retention and recruitment of employees. As you know, we are in a great resignation period, and it's getting harder and harder to find qualified employees, or just, or also, it's the competition for employees because of salaries. So that's an area we also have to focus more on, making sure we have quality employees, not just employees, but quality employees who care about the City of Montclair. You know, I'm a big proponent to beautify our parks and continue to fix our streets and beautify our neighborhood, and we're getting ready to spend $45 million to do that. So you'll be seeing a lot of capital projects that have already started, but that will continue on. I'm very proud of our human services because I think there's a big need in this community. So our senior lunch program, our active school programs, the Montclair to college programs, and the other social service programs the city provides to the Montclair residents. Many of them are in need. And of course, economic development in this community, and not just generates those taxes, but generates services like restaurants and retail. And we're trying to bring in more housing that's both needed and, of course, mandated by California. Our North Montclair building, a high-density area there, a mixed-use area of North Montclair, the goal line, bringing the goal line in, which I think is going to happen this year. I do believe that we will get the funding, the $800 million funding, believe that, $800 million. I know Freddie over there is like, "Where's that money coming from?" So, but I do believe we're going to get it this year. And basically, you know, we've got to maintain a balanced budget, and that's important, too. So I will say this for my council colleagues, let's have some fun. We're going to have some challenges up here, too. We won't agree all the time, but we try to get along, try to respect each other. We disagree, we respect each other's disagreement, but let's not get excited, right? The guys agree with you in the audience? Don't get excited, just work, right? That's what the people want. They want their council, their elected officials to work together. And I do want to recognize the city staff here. I know that City Manager Starr is on the dais, our city attorney, Diane Robbins, is up here dais. But I want to recognize all the city staff members who work to make the city as best as we can. And then, just want to state that there is a reception afterwards, the staff put together. So I encourage you all to come afterwards, the reception. There is also another free, there's a free margarita on the mayor at Los Portales. So if you want a free margarita, go to Los Portales afterwards, and you get one. The mayor's going to pay for it. One, okay? If you want to make it a Cadillac, that's fine, but one. So Ricardo, Los Portales is expecting us. So I want to stop there. I'm going to ask my two other colleagues, who have two more years to go, if they have anything to say. Go ahead, Councilmember Johnson.
Well, I am delighted that the three of you were reelected, and I look forward to working with you. We're going to do some fabulous things here in the City of Montclair. It's time to get to work again.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity. Councilmember Martinez, Councilmember Rue, Mayor Dutray, congratulations on your reelections. It has been an interesting two years since I've been on council, but it's been a pleasure to work with the three of you, the four of you, actually, but obviously, since we're up in two. I mean, you know, it's been an interesting ride, Carissa, with you and I, but I have noticed that on a couple of occasions, we have actually been the ones to do a motion in a second and agree on something and actually find some common ground. And we've done that even behind closed doors. And I sincerely hope there is more of that to come in two years. Bill, I don't know if you remember, you were elected in 1998. That was when Dolly Lumen decided to retire, and that's whose seat you took. And that was when you were elected. you edged me out by maybe 300 votes, 500 votes each time. And I remember saying to you then that the only reason why you ran is because when you got sworn in, you had this chamber filled with friends and family. Most of the seats here, most of the people here were for Bill Ru.
Pre-COVID.
And I said, the reason why you won is because clearly you had more friends and family in the city than I did. And and I come from a large Mexican family in the city. But to finally sit up on the dais and serve with you, it's been a an honor and a privilege. We have, our families go way back to the to the time when you and my mother and my aunts were all in high school together and band together. So our families have some history there as well, and it's been a pleasure working with you and an interesting ride as well. It's 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 fun to sit here next to my right honorable friend, Bill Ru. It's sometimes it could be interesting and fun, but I would not have Bill Ru any other way. Mr. Mayor, I I appreciate the the manner in which you've conducted the office of mayor. You have been one of the most open mayors in the region, open as far as accessibility. That is evident by all of the comments on social media. And of the five of us up here, they tag you 1,000 times more with problems than they do, perhaps, Bill doesn't have social media, than the other three of us. And that's a testament to your accessibility. I hear nothing but praise from your counterparts in cities like Upland and Rancho and Pomona and whatnot. So I appreciate you doing that on behalf of the good people of Montclair. You and I, back in the day, weren't necessarily political allies. We were kind of adversaries, and I'm glad that those days are behind us. And I'm glad that I had the opportunity to work with you these past two years, but even worked with you before I was on council. And I do look forward to moving this city forward, not looking in the rearview mirror, but looking through the windshield ahead, because the city does have great challenges, and I appreciate the walks of life that you all come from and what you bring to the table. So congratulations, looking forward to working with you, and to the people of Montclair, the City of Montclair is in good hands. Thank you, God bless you, Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much to you both for your comments. I will say this, there's a difference between a councilor and a mayor. When you're the mayor, everybody thinks you're in charge. That means they come to you and complain about issues. So I just want to let you know there's a lot more work to be a mayor because everybody thinks that you're going to fix their problems. So that's why I have more gray hair the last four years. And speaking of mayor, if I'm not around, we've got to have a Mayor Protemp, so that's the next item on the agenda, and I'm going to say to Mayor Protem Ru, thank you, thank you for your two years. And I'm, at this time, going to ask that we select Councilmember Denise Johnson to be the Mayor Protemp for the next two years, and that's my nomination. For Denise Johnson, is there any other nominations? If not, I'm going to close it, and let's take a roll call vote.
I'll technically second.
We have a second by Councilmember Lopez, and we'll do a roll call, a roll call vote.
Okay, Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes, absolutely.
Member Johnson?
I'm delighted.
Mayor Protem Ru?
Aye.
Mayor Dutre?
Aye. So congratulations, our new Mayor Protemp is now Denise Johnson, and just remember, if I'm not around, you're going to get all the complaints. That means you get gray hair. So. All right, so we're going to adjourn this meeting. It's been fun, and let's go have some more fun.